I just want to kind of go over. Our goals, um, also 2.2, 3.01, and 4.1 are for reports and for your review. And so if you have any. As we, as we, um, after the meeting, but we've had time to review these things. And so, um, I'm sure if you had questions, you have probably reached out by this time, right? So with the school board goal number five interim measure one and two, Dr. Birdsong will present those two, monitoring reports for us. But I was sharing with Ms. Basine earlier. I had a board member to reach out to me from a neighboring school division. And she kind of complimented this board on how we're monitoring our goals and progress. Um, and so she, she thought that we were a good model. And so I just, um, hope that we'll be to perfect it. And as we continue to get in the routine of monitoring student progress, that it's going to be a system that other boards can, can model, right? So I just wanted to share that. So Dr. Birdsong, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Good afternoon, Chair Buffalo, Vice Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, staff, community. Um, thank you for this opportunity. Dr. Paul is before us. We will be reviewing and discussing, um, updated school board goals, specifically number five, interim measures number one and two, all related to advanced studies, studies diplomas in our graduate students. So, Dr. Paul.
And good afternoon, uh, Chair, Ms. Johnson, Chair Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. Dr. Birdsong, um, as Dr. Birdsong said, I'll be reviewing goal five interim measures one and two today. Um, and as we talked about last time, I heard these are very closely related. The, the goals, they're following different cohorts towards, um, advanced studies diploma, uh, graduation rates. So the overall goal is the percentage of NPS graduates receiving advanced studies diplomas will meet or exceed the state average by the end of the 26, 27 school year of cohort 2027. Measure 5.1, which we'll focus on first, um, is specifically focusing on the cohort 2027, will successfully complete the appropriate courses to be on track to graduate with an advanced studies diploma by the end of the 23, 24 school year. So for those watching cohort 2027 is what we would traditionally call our 10th grade or sophomore class that entered the 10th grade this year. They're slated to graduate by June of 2027. So this would really ultimately be the class that, um, that would meet or exceed hopefully the goal at the end of the, of the, the period. And at the time of the writing the goal, the state average was 51.5%. I just keep that on the documents so everybody's aware of that. And then in around October timeframe, I think we'll get an updated state average for the 2024 graduates. So as the data show cohort 2027 data end of the year, 5% below the target rate with 45% being on track for an advanced studies diploma. However, there was a 7.5, uh, 7.5 point increase from third to fourth quarter. So we did see some, some gains at the end of the year. So that also the line, the line graph you'll see, um, the orange is the actual data. The blue was the targets that we set. And you can see we were getting closer to our target goal, um, as we approached the end of the year. So what does the data show or what's going well rather? Um, the increase from the third to fourth quarter was 7.5 points, which was an improvement from the change from second to third quarter. And although it was minimal, there was an improvement from first to fourth quarter as well. So throughout the year, we did see improvement in the percentage rate of students who are on track, according to our measures to graduate with an advanced studies diploma in 2027. What's not going well, um, students in the 2027 cohort are not currently passing some of the required courses to achieve an advanced studies diploma by their graduating cohort year. And I did, um, in the 2027 cohort is below the target for fourth quarter due to some failing grades and some course subject areas. And again, the measure here, I do want to scroll back up and just mention under the table, it, it talks about the data that we're following for this. And it's, you know, their first, um, first or higher math course. So if they're taking math for the first time as entering ninth grader, or if they have a math credit, then they're already on track. The first English course because ninth grade English would be the first one they can take. First health and PE course for credit, the first or higher science course, first or higher foreign language course, and the first or higher history course, and the first or, uh, first elective course for, um, for our high school credit bearing courses. So, um, we're going to continue to provide relevant meaningful world language PD offerings because as we've talked about before in the past, um, one of our deficiencies in this area is with students successfully completing world language, the three credits they need or the two and two to get an advanced studies diploma. And that's one of our biggest holdbacks. And implement the, we implemented the new thematic units this year based on best practices, student interest and communication, um, for all level one languages. And centrally, we're creating and sharing lists of students in the 2027 cohort that are on track for advanced studies diploma with school counselors to assist with tracking their performance and provide needed supports at the school level. There's some more detailed reports for our counselors, um, so they can, they can track this with their students as they meet with them throughout the year as well. And so I'll pause there after measure 5.1 for any questions you may have.
Okay, school board members, you've heard the report. Any questions, Ms. Basine?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Paul. I was wondering if you could, um, expand on, so in regards to what's working well, what strategies or resources led to the increase between third and fourth quarter primarily? And then the trend was, you know, improvement from first to fourth quarter. But what, um, what, again, what strategies led to that slight improvement that was noted?
So the, the, um, the ability always of our teachers at the second half of the year and specifically in that fourth quarter to work with our students and do a final push. We see more students who are willing to stay after school. They're, they're seeing that they, there is light at the end of the tunnel if they really work. So that focused the ability to, uh, use the all-in funding for during the day tutoring that we had as well as still continue to use SRR funds to focus on that. In the November timeframe, we had sent, um, all, you know, teachers, um, you know, lists of successes for students on their previous SOL tests, the mid-year SOL tests for grades three through eight, I realize, but also focusing on with our university instructors at the high school level as well. And then ultimately near the end of the year, when the word came out that we could do attendance recovery, because some students at that point who had just kind of waved at saying, I, I can't succeed. Missed too many days. And we were able to say, no, we can make that up. And we focused on standards, um, you know, learning and specific standards really helped to push their grades up as well.
So would you, would you say based on that, the next steps would be to get ahead? So those things that we know led to improvements.
We started earlier this year.
So you started earlier this year.
So we did, um, we met, um, Ms. Brown and I met early and our teams have both collaborated on, um, on placement of U high instructors on an equitable manner to make sure that our students are getting coverage. We're working now with, uh, earlier with schools to budget out, um, their safety net funds for tutoring in school as well. We've emphasized, uh, you know, periods of time during the school day where students can be pulled from, if they're in a study block or during lunch or whatever it may be for them to get accelerated tutoring during the day. Um, and then of course, we've already kicked off our attendance challenge to focus on the importance of that. But where we've seen success last year, we made sure day one. And in fact, this year, um, a good amount of our university instructors were already hired and placed before this school year started. And we allowed them to come in the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of Teacher in Service Week to plan with teachers so that we, the first day of school, we were ready to go.
Thank you. And I have one more question and then a comment for the board. The, my second question is, so do we know why students are not passing the required courses? What the barriers are? And then what, are there specific courses that students are not doing well?
I thought you might ask that since you asked that last time. So I brought some data with me, um, around the specific courses. So for focusing really on cohort 2027, um, the, the biggest holdback of core courses was math with, with success rate of gaining that credit. And then the other thing that we faced that we talked about is really going into sophomore year of students either having a year of language credit already or enrolling in language by that sophomore year. So as I explained last year, we really worked closely with our counselors to do a large push to get students enrolled. And since we just finished the 10 days, we're starting to look at those numbers because you know, a lot of course changes happen in the first 10 days to see where we, where we fall with that. But math was the largest core course with that. And so last year midway, we started using, um, the product Zern for our students in three through eight. So we're looking to see if we can expand that into Algebra One at the high school level and Geometry for those, those ninth grade students to increase their success rate as well. And we are still continuing the use of Adventum that we've used and really, really working with our high school teachers on small group instruction. And, and that's difficult because, you know, we've been used to years and years for elementary school. It's like they have eyes in the back of their head and they can, they can manage all this. But high school small group instruction is a tougher, tougher task. And, and we've really, this is our second year, we're really, really focused on how are we, how are we using our data wisely to create that atmosphere for students so that we're individualizing the instruction even more.
Thank you. So I think this is a good segue to my, the comment that I was going to make. So Dr. Paul, often at this point when we're asking questions and the question that I know I ask every time is, you know, what are the strategies that are working, not working well? And all of that, and we talk about whether that could be included in the monitoring report. And you do a great job of, you know, elucidating what those strategies are that clearly, you know, there are strategies in place, interventions in place. And I think it's important for, for that kind of information to be included in the monitoring report so that we know, you know, that these strategies, that there are strategies, number one, and that there are strategies that are leading to the improvement. So how are we reaching the goals? And that the, that, those are the actual strategies that are being put in place. Because a lot of what you just shared with us is not included here. And so I would like to see, um, that included, which was, um, you know, a reason why I had asked if we could consider having a conversation on, you know, the monitoring report because we've been practicing for the last year about, you know, what we want. Do we have all the data that we need, which has been great? But, you know, what can we do to, um, really get a better handle on the front end on what those strategies are that are, that are working well, not working well? And how do we pivot to make sure that, um, our students are, that we are meeting our targets? And so I think it's, you know, for the board to consider in reviewing the monitoring reports that you have and that, that we were going to talk about as examples today, but to consider what I've just asked for and have asked for in previous monitoring discussions to be included in these monitoring reports.
My comments are directly to what Ms. Basine was asking for. I'd say I don't have a problem with that. What I'm thinking in my mind is how do I make that board level? Because strategies to me are, are at the administration implementation level. So as a board member, if we add it in there, what are the things that come to us in respect of what are we funding? Like the tool that you were saying, that so when it gets time around budget time, we know that this is working X, Y, and Z, and this is where we need to put the funding. So I'm, so I'm like, I'm hearing what you're saying now, but if I could get it to like a board level piece, because I mean, you, you, you know, that, that's your piece there. But it'll help us better understand when it comes around funding time. We know that this is working, um, and that we need to probably increase it or this is, you know, so forth.
Definitely. And, and to be clear, when I say I don't want like a, you know, we're not here to tell you how to do it. It's knowing what is being done, the what. And that's what the board needs to know so that whether it's budget, whether it's resource allocation, like moving teachers, policies, I mean, I'm saying, you know, moving resources where they're needed, um, or, or policies that might be impacted. Those are the things at the board level that we need to know. So, um, I would like to see that kind of information be included, um, in the monitoring reports. But we could, we could talk about that in greater detail.
Also I want to create an additional piece that's in there. I mean, what was that? You said Zern, was that what it was? You, you said as an example of something that was working.
Zern, Zern started last year. That was, if you recall last year, an all-in came. All-in started with Ignite for literacy and Zern for math. But Ignite didn't turn out to be the right product that VDIW thought it was. So we latched on to some of those licenses. We talked about that before as well. But then they came with Zern, which is a different math product. So we use it a lot with our smaller group tutorings, but some of our teachers have really found it useful in tier one instructions as well. So looking, when we find something that's useful, then we look to see, is it, is it extendable further to where we want it to be?
Right. And that's a great example of a, a situation where you pivoted from using one resource to another, which could have budgetary impact or, you know, and so that's, that, that is important for us to, to know, so.
Cross your fingers that VDIW pays for that right now.
Yeah. But like you, and you mentioned like SRR funding, you know, some, some things are being done through SRR funding, which we know is going to, is expiring, so.
And I'll say in the budget that was proposed by Dr. Birdsong and passed by the board there, that, that was really covered well.
Right, right.
We, we looked at everything that was successful and covered it well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Thank you. Uh, first, I just chiming on the strategy piece, you know, ultimately what we're trying to accomplish as a board is to, at least in terms of our monitoring, is set goals based upon, um, you know, what we've heard from the community, also based upon the needs assessments and then our own, uh, review of our data and progress. So there's definitely the important value of being, being able to see where we are. Not only are we on track in a particular interim period, but also are we on track for the three to five year goal that, that we've established? The value of having the, the strategy or at least having the understanding of the strategy, you know, just gives the board a sense of now, for example, at the beginning of the year, you know, do we need to be more aggressive? You know, do we need to encourage? Do we need to make some adjustments based upon what we've seen in the past year? So, you know, it's not so much about us, as my colleagues have said, getting in the weeds of trying to say what the strategy should be. But even when we talk about budget time, by the time we get to the, actually approving a budget, you know, we're approaching the, the fourth quarter. So if we're going to be able to make some adjustments now in order to, um, more aggressively support our student learning, that's just something that we could know now and something that we could be able to have a conversation with the superintendent about. Are there any adjustments that, that need to be made or greater support, so whatever the case may be, so that, um, we can stay on track or hopefully ahead of track in terms of the outcomes that we're trying to achieve. Specific to the report, Dr. Paul, can you just remind me again, the, the quarterly definition of on track? That's passing grade?
Correct.
And so that's a C or better?
No, it's, it's, it's passing grade because it better earns credit. So technically a student could get an advanced diploma, you know, if they made Ds all the way through as long as they met the requirements, um, of courses.
So, so we are, so by looking at this current report, it is, do you, do you have a sense of, the cohort in terms of those that may be, um, performing at C and above or whatever we define honor roll level versus those that may be, um, just getting over, just getting above the, above the line?
Can force that down? I'm sorry, Mr. Jordan.
And regardless, Mr. Jordan, if they still achieve that D, they can still get that advanced diploma.
Well, but that's the, I guess that's the point that I'm trying to raise that there's, so as we're looking at this as a board and team, we have an understanding of that because there's, while we've, we've set the goal and we're operating around student excellence, I can only, I'll speak for myself, that, that my hope and goal and expectation would be is that we're not just trying to get children above the minimum line to achieve, that our goal around student excellence is really to push, to try to get, make sure that, that our students are performing above the minimum in order to meet the goal. And so that's why I was asking the question. So, uh, it just raises to be another, something else we may want to consider. Do we further define it or at least try to further get a sense of, as we're making progress towards achieving the goal, are we really stretching the organization and trying to make sure that A, we have more students who are achieving advanced studies diploma? And then B, achieving it at a, at a level that, frankly, we want for our own children? And so that's, that's why I was asking that. Um, and so in that context then, as we go from each quarter, so with considering the, the lines, the dip and the, and the coming back up, by the time we get to the third quarter and the last quarter, that's a. Cumulative of the previous quarters. So, so we look at first quarter data is what the students are doing in the first, uh, weeks, whatever it is. And then we look at the second quarter, it's the first and the second combined, and then the third combined. So, um, to the point that we see this jump in the fourth quarter, I know you mentioned that with, um, when you were responding to Ms. Basine. I thought you also mentioned something about credit recovery. Did you, did I understand that? Oh, attendance recovery. Yeah, actually I wrote that down.
Yeah.
So then, what, if I understand you correctly, what you're saying is that we have students who, because they think they don't have the attendance to pass, they lose their motivation. And then once we are able to demonstrate to them that they can still achieve the goal within that fourth quarter, that, that motivation comes back, is that?
Yeah, I, I, I think that it's a combination of once they've missed so many days, they feel they can't focus on the material because they don't have an understanding. So when we were able to come back and say, well, not only will we give your days back, but we're focusing specifically on the material you missed and the standard because that was a requirement as well. But then the light became brighter for them in the tunnel and, and they, they were successful. And also traditionally, um, I've been going back to when I was in the classroom in the late 90s, um, early 2000s, you know, that fourth quarter push, students were like, I, I want this. I know I want it. I know I goofed around earlier, but please, Mr. Paul, can, can you work with me? And our teachers are very empathetic and they want the students to succeed as well. So you'll, I think traditionally you'll see that kind of a lift from third to fourth quarter.
And addition to the parents saying, you will pass this class, right? You will stay after school.
And then just make sure, and then the. On the chart, remind me where the, where the fourth quarter data is again?
This, this last, this last year or are you talking about right here?
In the, in the, right in that chart.
The final target is fourth quarter.
Oh, the actual data, okay, I see the 45%. Okay. So then for this year, what's our? We're, we're starting off at 45% on track, which is 5% what our goal was last year. What's our, or is that coming up in my, what's our, what's our first quarter?
Our target this year was to reach 50%. Our overall target was for this class to be at 51.5%. Although if you recall, when we made this goal, it is a moving target because we don't know where the state's going to end up. And the, and our goal was to be at or above the state average. So when we created this, we were thinking, we need to, we need to keep the cohort, you know, not only growing, but we want to keep them above that 51 and a half percent line or get them above that line earlier. And, and doing that, you know, a lot, a lot on this goal is going to be riding when we do a final, um, count of enrollment for our cohort 2027 in a foreign language course. Because that's a big gatekeeper for them on the advanced studies. And if, if we're right at that line at that point, let's say when we look at the numbers, we're sitting at 52% of our students could still get advanced studies based off course enrollment right now, then, you know, that's how we need to reconfigure kind of what our targets are through this year as we maintain and move forward. I think, you know, you know, when we talked earlier about one of the other goals, you know, we, we're getting more mindful now to see how it's looking through the year on, on this type of data because it, you know, we had to create the way we, we focused on this. And, and, you know, we thought 44.8 to 50%, you know, from an actual quarter one, you know, moving forward, we thought it was reasonable, but it might, might have still been aggressive to, to move that fast with some of our, our students. So really relooking at these numbers as we go into next year, it's, it's a part of what we're doing right now.
So just for clarity, right now, we don't have targets for.
We're working on them right now based on the finalized data that's rolling in.
And when would you, would you expect us to be able to?
So, I, I mean, our, our, our talk was around October timeframe to, to have some, you know, because that's really when we have the final state data that's out as well so that we can then reset interim measures for this year.
Was it this one or was it another? Maybe you were just saying that. So while we know that we started off with the, with the state average at minimum, I guess we would try to reach that 50% or 51% threshold, um, as it was when we adopted it. And if the state average goes below, we don't drop ours. So our minimum would still be.
Well, we, I mean, in the actual goal, it doesn't say that. In the actual goal, it says we need to exceed the state average. Um, and we just recorded that at the point, the class of 2023 data, our average was 35.3%, the state average was 51.5%.
Right, so the, right, because the state average is what it is now. We have a multi-year goal that we're trying to reach so that into that cycle, our average will be above the state average. The state average is currently 51.5. But almost like what we've talked about in some of the other goals, our objective, yes, is to exceed the state average. But I think in some of the other goals, we described that also by. By four of them, it's not happening this because we could beat this. The state could just fall through the floor and we could stay the same and meet the, you know, meet the goal.
However, I'd like to comment on that, Mr. Jordan. I think if the state's falling through the floor and we're not, then we're excelling faster than the state because there's something going on across the state that's saying they're not focusing or they're not getting. But look, Norfolk is, you know, staying level and staying above. So I still think there's something to be said for data that looks like that.
Yeah, and I just said it, but you know, the general principle is we're always raising the ceiling. We're not, you know, just accepting being level or going down. Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Questions?
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I wanted to go back to, um, I guess just looking at what the advanced studies diploma, and I know that we at one point said that we may revisit this one because I don't want to send the wrong message. Big proponent, students going to college. But those students who, I know when I hear D students, things like that, doesn't, doesn't mean that a student is bad.
Oh, no.
That may not be their subject matter or whatever it may be. But we have several students that are CTE, those hands-on. So I, you know, I just, just because we're not pumping out a whole bunch of kids that are going to two and four year college institution, which a lot of data and things are showing that that may not be where a lot of folks are going. But when we're talking about more technical jobs, um, and we're even talking about the area and having those things coming, I would like for us at some point, and I'm just putting it here for the, for the parking lot to, because I've talked about this, you know, this Dr. Birdsong and I see in the scotching over there. Maybe even getting an update because I know we were doing some things to revert, not until today. The, this, uh, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm just, it's going to be good. Because y'all know I, I love what I see in Hampton with Career Academy model. And I know that we're moving to some things in our version here in Norfolk. But I think that that's an important thing if we just kind of build that in there because. I think we gotta be bold. Um, we're seeing here, this is great, but I think that Hampton took a bold stance and the time that they did to change the way that they did education. Um, and, and I see that we're making some strides that are there, but I often sit back here and I think to myself, are we being bold enough? Um, and are we really getting to the crux of it? And, and that's just how we deliver education, how we structure our schools. And I, so I think the larger discussions that we talk about um, with, uh, our physical facilities and things like that moving for the, for the future, that there is a great opportunity for us to continue that conversation of being really bold and really changing the way that we do that for all of our students. Not just advanced studies that I see that are here, but then also those technical things and really being partners together throughout the entire city to, how do we sell that? How do we sell Norfolk Public Schools and, and market it? When I say sell it, market it to our community that there's great value in public education and this is what we're doing. So, I don't know, I'm just, it's just in my mind. I was sitting in there where I wasn't digging you on anything you had down there, but I was just thinking, it triggered me saying, you know, how do we be bold and? Okay, let it out.
So with the, with this goal in mind too, you need to also think about the standard diploma. I know we want to go above and beyond, but hundreds of our children go off to college with a standard diploma. They're brilliant children. For whatever reason, they decide that they don't want to take that last foreign language course or that chemistry lab and therefore don't qualify for the advanced studies diploma. But they end up at UVA, they end up at VCU, they end up at George Mason, Hampton, Norfolk State. Um, so.
End up in that number at the end of the year with all the scholarship money, right?
Pardon?
I said they end up, we go, we get that, that scholarship number for each high school.
Yes.
So.
So, to your point.
I know this is here and I know that the state had it down there, but it's just, um, you know, I know when we first initially looked at it, I, I don't know if it, I mean, that's great, but it doesn't need to be broader. Do we need to have something at tomorrow Norfolk Public Schools and specific? You know, I'm always going to be a proponent of CTE. I, I know the value.
And if I can add briefly, Mr. Clanton, um, also recall with our strategic plan, we do have a measure that, that's more closely aligned to what you're talking about. I think where it measures AP, IB, dual enrollment and certifications together.
Yeah.
And that was put in place for that to say, you know, if a student's going to be college bound, we, we, we want to make sure they have experienced either AP, IB or dual enrollment. And if not, we want to make sure they have a certification in their hands so they're employable when they leave. So that, that measures in place with a strategic plan as well.
There are many roads to scholarship.
Many, many roads.
And that it may be later on because you may go in the military and while you're in the military, decide to.
Or take a gap year and work and then go back to college.
This gap year is a big thing.
And, and gap years are very popular these days, but. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah. So, no, I, I appreciate that, but not but. So, I think sometimes we have, we can create the very perception that we say we're trying to avoid. So the fact that we are monitoring, uh, advanced studies diploma, it doesn't say anything about what one will do with the diploma. It doesn't say that you can't have an advanced study diploma with and every CTE course that's available. And so I think we have this, uh, and I don't mean we as a board, I'm just saying as a, as a public. I think we, because of our, uh, because we're used to dealing with students in, in binary scenarios, either or scenarios, that we think that because we're monitoring, trying to grow the number of students that are achieving advanced studies diplomas, that somehow that ties with their career goals or their college goals or the other skills that they, that they learn in Norfolk Public Schools. And so I just think as a board, we have to be, we have to be comfortable and, uh, and, and confident in that because the whole objective of having three to five goals is so the board can have focus and impact. And, and even as we were, even as you talk about the, the Hampton model, which, you know, I'm, I'm also always been a fan of, but then now we're talking strategy, right? So it is, is that, it is.
Necessarily strategy or changing of culture because?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm saying that the, I think the student excellence piece hopefully is about us changing the culture and hopefully us spending the time monitoring our student progress will change the culture. I'm just saying that, again, sometimes the Hampton model or the Ford Foundation, the Ford model, the academy model, um, you know, can be a strategy. The comprehensive CTE can be a strategy. The STEAM school can be a strategy. The, um, community schools can be a strategy. I'm just saying that right now, our ability to be able to, if we have these goals and we're comfortable with these goals and we're going to monitor these goals, it's important that we be able to do that. Otherwise, um, we will never give the system as a whole the focus from the board that then allows for that to, to cascade on down. So there's nothing you say that I disagree with in terms of being bold and how, how all the things fit together. The main thing I just wanted to reemphasize is students graduating Norfolk Public Schools with advanced studies diploma does not mean that they're not receiving CTE, uh, skills. Students who, as you all articulated, students who graduate with standard diploma doesn't mean anything less. I think a lot of that is in our, you know, in our own psyche that we have to figure out. When we say all students and preparing all students to be college and career ready, that we're just, that we mean it and we, uh, and we, and we, and we model it and not get caught up in because it doesn't say that over and over and over again, that somehow we assume that that's not something that we value and that's important to us.
And I respect that. I think the thing that got me was that when some folks kind of saw it on their face when we said that they could pass with a D.
Yeah.
And I, and I, that's because a student, that may not have, that's, you don't know what that student went through. You know, because I, I'll be perfectly honest, in college, I took statistics three times. Because that was not my thing. My professor wanted me to learn the equation. I said, I just need to know how to, what the problem is and what about else? I took it three times and then finally got it done at TCC, thank the Lord. But that does not mean that a student won't be successful in that. I just, you know, it just would, when I heard that and then when I heard that they could still get the great, um, the credit with the D, which is still passing, um, you know, it, it triggered me back to what I heard, um, Mason, who's the, the chair, say, you know, he got up there and as he always does, you know, in Hampton Public Schools, a hundred percent accredited.
Oh, 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 oh.
Say that again.
The chair of the school board and we're a hundred percent accredited. And then I think about,
Said what? I'm sorry.
They're a hundred percent accredited every single school, which means that the kids are coming to school, they're doing what they're supposed to do, that they're, they're graduating on time. We see it all down there. So it just makes me, that, that was my triggering thing back there. When I heard the D thing and then whatever else, it's like, okay, well, I mean, it's got to be for everybody. It's not just, and I understand what you're saying. This is the goal we stuck with down here, but I'm, you know, and I appreciate you bringing me back to the, it's in the strategic plan, but yeah, it's.
And if I may, so we need to not talk in circles because when we set the tone for what we discuss as far as our school board goals, when we were going through governance training with the Valben Group, there were a set, there was a, a, a set piece that we said before every meeting, you know, what is our mission? What is our vision? Why are we here? And when we have this discussion, our discussion is because we are hyper-focused on a set of two to five goals. These are the ones that the board has brought forth and said, this is what is rising to the level of our, um, highest, uh, need. And this is why we are focusing on it. But we don't need to have any, uh, sense of a lack of attention to the other areas because underneath these goals is a strategic plan, which we have adopted. And that is why it is so important for us to, um, have it in our monitoring reports and our monitoring calendar so that we feel and the public knows that, yes, while we may be hyper-focused on some of these items, it does not mean that other items are taking a backseat, that we don't, uh, weren't, we don't care if, you know, if certain students are just getting by to get the advanced diploma. Of course, we want everyone to be high flyers. You know, I mean, that's why I had asked, let's not just go for the pass rates of the SOLs. Let's get those high pass rates. We're gonna, we're moving them along. But I don't get the sense, and I don't think any of us get the sense that we're just comfortable with a D. But what we did say was we want fifty percent of our students to graduate with an advanced diploma. And if we start with baby steps and achieve that goal, we are going to celebrate. And then we're going to say, we achieved this goal. Now can we get two-thirds of those kids to be A and B honor roll? That's how we do it. And that, and we have to celebrate those small successes. Because if we don't, then nobody feels that they've really accomplished anything. So we need to talk positively. We need to celebrate our wins. We need to continue to focus on the goals, um, that we have here and not, um, and not have the perception that other things are not being, uh, being addressed. So.
I would say that's called like the bronze medal attitude, the mentality that at least I'm up here on the podium.
You know, th- there's a lot of schools right now that are going to pass fail because of the stresses that, uh, students are facing with the competitiveness. And so at the end of the day, and I, I think I hear what Mr. Jordan is saying is can our children demonstrate that they are learning and can they demonstrate that learning wherever they go? And, and that's what we want. We want our students to be successful wherever they are and demonstrate that learning. And yep, if you're on the podium, you're on the podium. You did it. And if our kids cross the line with the advanced diploma, maybe they, maybe they have, you know, certain average, but they have lots of CTE courses and they're going to be able to grab that job. So I think for us, it's, it's celebrate if we can get to this goal and, and hopefully we can. And we can be above the state average.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so five point two, um, I, I'll, I'll do this probably a little quicker. It's the same goal, but we're looking at the twenty twenty-six cohort. And the goal for the twenty twenty-six cohort was to reach forty percent because as you remember, they started, um, at twenty-seven point seven percent. Um, so I, I do want to point this out that we started lower with this cohort than we'll be starting with our twenty twenty-seven cohort. I think that's a small victory right there as well. Um, and our target, again, I, was maybe a little too aggressive, but we, we did miss it by about seven point one points. Uh, percent, we were, we were at thirty-two point one. However, again, there was a four point six increase, point increase from third to fourth quarter. Um, and again, you can see we started to follow the trend line for the data. We did, but the gap stayed pretty well maintained during, during the year. Um, and we knew when we started tracking this one, um, that the, the twenty-six and the twenty-five cohort, which I think we'll be discussing at the, uh, business meeting, um, tho- those courses were already set when this goal was set. So it was very difficult to make changes to it, especially, um, when, when they, their path has, has, has been pretty well set. We have to do this middle school up, which is why we're having those conversations with middle school up more in depth now. Um, the, what's going well is that increase from third to fourth was four point six points. And the improvement from first quarter to the end of the fourth quarter was four point four points. So we still, we did see improvement um, from that first quarter to the fourth quarter. Um, so what's not going well is, is that, um, currently passing some of the required courses to achieve the advanced studies. Um, students in twenty twenty-six cohort had opted not to take a foreign language course, causing them not to be able to be included as on track, uh, from the very get-go of this year. Um, and the, the twenty twenty-six cohort is below target, uh, for quarter four for failing grades. And, um, really we're seeing that, i- interestingly, more in, um, English, um, and, um, history, um, our two subject areas where we see the higher failure rates for our cohort twenty twenty-six. Um, so next steps, uh, very similar, um, is, is with that PD world language. So students will be more interested and want to take it and stay in it when they're in it. Um, the thematic units are in place and then, uh, really working with our counselors with lists of students, um, to help maintain those are currently that are on track or that can get back on track by maybe they missed that history course or that math course to make sure that they're, they're doing some credit recovery and making up those courses, uh, during their junior year, um, this school year.
The report, board members, is there any questions?
Mrs. Mark Buffalo.
Oh, Ms. Basin.
Thank you, Dr. Poll. And again, um, you know, my questions are very similar to what, uh, we just discussed in five point one. So if, um, if there's anything different that can be shared about this particular cohort, I'd love to hear that. But I, and I do have another question, but.
Yeah, really, the, the answers for all three cohorts can be similar. Um, you know, for the strategies that we have in place, I think for the twenty-six and the twenty-five cohorts, the, the, the biggest portion on the, on the why they're not able to make it is, is the foreign language course. And then specifically failure rates for this was, uh, in English and history. So really working with some, um, some credit recovery there.
Um, and so with that, are you seeing a greater proportion of students struggling at any particular school? Is it, um, like, are you looking at that and do you have any information to share about that?
I don't have information with me to share school by school because we had agreed we'd kind of keep it division level. Um, but know that we focus with each principal on their data and, and we, you know, this is a, a data point we talk about now and, and, we work with counselors at every school when it comes to course enrollment and, um, working with the success of students to be able to achieve an advanced studies diploma. Uh, but I didn't bring school by school data here because there's, it's been conflicting conversation.
Yeah.
So I, I really wanted to keep it the high level, um, division level conversation.
Yeah, the, the only thing I'd say about that is that if there is a stark trend, um, where, uh, you know, where a particular school, and we know we've had inequitable, um, you know, historically, I mean, not just now, but historically where some of our high schools haven't had, uh, you know, the number of maybe teachers or, or, um, teachers in those specific subject areas that, um, that if, if there are things like that that need to be highlighted to us, I know, I trust that you would highlight that if.
And we've, I think, you know, uh, especially coming into this year, we've really, um, we've looked at, at equitable resources across the board. So if we see that a school's struggling, uh, you know, the best example is university instructors. It's not two, 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 two. It's, you know, one, three, two, five, seven, eight, you know, based on the data, based on the size of the school, based on their needs. Um, and, and, you know, that goes, um, wi- with a, a lot of how we distribute resources. Um, and even with Mr. Brady and his team, you know, it, it's not the same, you know, we're given an hour at every school once a month. It's this school needs us seven hours and, and these other schools might need us an hour every other month, um, to give updates. So really how we're using our resources really supports the needs of each school to provide them with improvements.
Yeah.
Just wanted to go back to, um, part of the conversation we were having with the other report, you know, Dr. Burson, Dr. Poll. In, in terms of the aspirational learning, I mean, can you, can you just maybe refocus us again? What's the theory behind an advanced diploma when it comes to learning? I mean, what, what is it that is the, the crux of, of why that's there?
I, I believe that some of it has to do with, um, if you think about the number of courses, um, that you have to complete in order to do an advanced studies diploma versus a standard, of course, there are more courses there. And, um, the courses that you have to take, many of them are more rigorous than, than the courses you would have to take with a standard diploma. So the thinking might be that, you know, if I am able to achieve an advanced studies diploma, then I can go to any college that I want to go to if, if, if that's what you aspire to do. So I just think it, it's in place to ensure that we are able to provide or the child has had an opportunity to engage in the most rigorous courses available and have access to, to those courses.
And I, I, I appreciate that and reminds me of something that Mr. Clanton said earlier. I can remember, uh, my father in particular would want me to take classes that he wasn't sure I would pass. And, but it was more about having the exposure to the, the curriculum and also having the exposure to the work habits that students who were more successful than I, you know, were, were doing. That's, so I, I think that, I, I appreciate that because you know, as Dr. Gabriel was, um, was talking again, and I just remember our conversations over the years about, you know, the, on the SOLs, you know, trying to reach that advanced proficiency. It's, it's, it's not a good or bad. It's just a matter of us saying. It's just a matter of us saying, as a, as a board and a community saying, we, we're just setting expectations that we want our, all of our students, because you are remembering our little norms thing, we say each student. But we want each student to be able to have the opportunity to get that exposure to those various courses and opportunities. So whatever path they take upon successful completion from North Public Schools, we know that we've done all we can to prepare them.
And we believe.
And we believe that they can do it, absolutely.
That is very important.
Absolutely. And, and again.
That kind of goes back to your example too, the statistics. Like, you had to take it three times, but you had to have that in order to get your degree.
Exactly. But, but I will also.
Have these courses.
But I will also say.
Or you can get that advanced studies diploma.
The governor's school is not advanced studies. We don't get an advanced studies degree out of that one. But I'm taking theory.
Yeah.
Which is very, very deep math in musical terms. So again, what I'm saying is not to, I, I, we offer every opportunity that's out there. The governor's school may not say it's advanced studies, but it's pulling and, and, and you look at some of the technical courses that people have to take and some of the other math. So we have, we offer a lot of different things. Again, like I said, the thing that triggered me when I heard D, that just kind of was like, okay, if that person gets a D and they get the credit for it, they, they may have struggled on that particular one. That doesn't mean that they will get a D on the next thing, but I, I just, I, you know, we want, we're offering in many different things as possible for our students. And I just want to say that it's one thing. I know that's the goal. But Norfolk Public Schools is catering to all students, and we'll continue to keep pressing. That's all.
All right.
Thanks, y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Poole. As I shared before, three, 2.02 is a report, back to school report. Our policies are there. We can see those on the consent agenda at the September 18th meeting. Also is loaded is the budget calendar for fiscal year 2026, and we'll be having some discussions around that. So with all that said, we're going to move on to 4.02, may have a motion to go into closed session.
So the budget discussion was just sent to us as a document?
It's the calendar.
That's just the calendar?
Yes, and we're gonna have a.
But it says budget discussion. So are you asking for any discussion?
Well, if you have any questions around the calendar, that's loaded up there. But we're gonna, we're gonna have a full fledged board discussion.
Okay. Right. Just for, that's a proposed draft timeline, the budget timeline.
I think that, that's the, that's the administration's calendar.
It's administration's calendar, okay. No, I was just saying on the agenda, it said discussion, nevermind.
Yeah. But it's, it's, this is the administration's calendar.
Okay. But I don't want to discuss it, but I do have some feedback, because I think, as we talked about last year, ultimately, the, the budget timeline is the board's. And so, I do think there's, I do have some comments that I'll, I'll share in writing.
Okay.
So, let me just ask this, because I don't want us to come back. So, this is the proposed calendar. We're in September now, September 20th. So if there's going to be any changes or discussion with us down there, we might want to let administration know now. That's why I'm saying this is budget discussion. We always say we get on this thing too late. So if there's, let's take the time just to quickly go through this, that there's some stuff in there, so we can not have you all out there thinking there's one timetable and then there's something else. You understand what I'm saying?
That's fine. All right. So, Mr. Jordan, you were, say what you said again.
Okay. So, we, we started off with our progress monitoring. Last year, we were doing our goals and our monitoring with the anticipation that this year, with the anticipation that this year, our, we would be able to work on budget alignment with our goals. And so I think it's important for us to, to make sure that there's a early on conversation around our goals and how the budget proposal or the budget process will align with achieving those goals and, and support the strategies that, that are being proposed to do so. And so, when I look at this timeline, I think it's the traditional timeline. And I think we need to have some consideration of a timeline that really aligns with our student outcome goals. That was part of our norms, part of our board non-negotiables. And, and I think we need to be clear on whether or not we're, we're doing that. I don't think there's, because I knew we had other things that we said we were going to do today, you know, I did not give it greater, greater focus. But at a high level, I, I don't think it clearly demonstrates to the board how the timeline is going to align with our, with our goals. So, that's all.
Observation to, on the calendar. So this is, or the discussion. Ms. Clanton?
Yeah. Is there any new alignment with the end of school being in, in May? I guess what I'm, I'm asking in, in regards to like, when we do contracts and everything, most folks will be gone now, right?
As of June.
As of June.
As of May, yeah.
Yeah, end of May. Like normally, you know, we have that comfort of June, and typically, you know, we want to get contracts out and things like that. And, and so when I see the, I guess the 21st, so is the city moving that up? Because typically, we would get that, we'd get that in May, but I think we would just kind of hold it over until we met in June to kind of make that final adoption. So we would still get it. It's kind of moving up there. I hear Mr. Jordan mention about the student outcomes, the SOLs and everything are in end of April, May. So which student outcomes are we talking about? The board goals? Board goal monitoring ones? Okay. The board goals that we have? So what, which month, I guess we're saying? Because each month has a different thing. So which one are we kind of using as the benchmark period of where we are? And I guess we're using, I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, well, where's that line to make it fit in this one that we're going to use that particular point to say that's, this is working or not working and recommendations? Because it's got to come from the administration to us, right?
Well, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I understood it, because I had a similar thought, is just to ensure the alignment with, it should be in every step, you know, along the way, that, that we're aligning with our board goals. So even, you know, the instructions to MPS departments, you know, how are our board goals being translated down into the classroom level, or, you know, the department level? So then come, making sure that that comes back and is in alignment with the goals. Like, are we planning our budget, creating a budget, planning a budget around achieving our goals?
If I'm not mistaken, the budget that we received this year was aligned, and I saw strategic plan, which is the comprehensive overall. Again, board goals are what we monitor through the superintendent, right?
No, that, that, I think that's where we, I, I think that's where we get stuck. I mean, that is where, whatever that is, those are our board goals, where we're monitoring the superintendent, but then it goes all the way down to the classroom, otherwise we're never going to achieve the goals. You know, so in order for us to achieve the goals, those have to be communicated and all the way down. Those are our board priorities. Those are our, you know, we're already communicating to the, to the administration what our priorities are through those goals. So that should be communicated down to each department, each school building, each classroom. That's what we're trying to do.
So for me then, when we look at the budget, it's, it's, it's comprehensive, it's, it's the strategic plan, and it's the, the board focused goals.
Which are in alignment with each other. So they, so the board goals are ultimately what we're, like, right.
I guess I'd just like to say strategic plan and goals together.
Yeah.
That's what I like to say. Because to me, when we say the budget needs to align with the board goals, what I hear is, that's where our focus is, and we're trying not to do that. We're trying to say, we, we understand where the, where there is focus needed, but the budget is going to support the strategic plan. Out of the strategic plan has come, and the data has come where we are having the hyper focused on the board goals. So I think we just need to be mindful of how we say it. That's all. I think we're all saying the same thing. And I see that in the schools of, with equity and excellence, because that is a clear alignment of where we say we need to focus, reading, literacy, achievement. The budget has been aligned to support that with staffing, with bonuses, with incentive pay. And hopefully, we're going to see that translate into achievement of the goals. You look confused.
Well, I, I, I am a little, because I, I think there is a lot of confusion among the board. So, and I, I, each time, I feel like that confusion gets deeper and deeper. And so, I, I don't even, I know, I don't know.
I'm not confused. I'm personally, I just.
I'm not saying, well, I didn't necessarily say you were, but.
I mean, I'm just, I just think that maybe what we need, you know, here's an idea. Why don't we just define some of the terms we use, so that we're all on the same page of terms? You know what I'm saying? You know, like, I think that we.
Yes.
That might be an idea.
Unseen.
I don't know. I, I, I just, yeah, so.
There's any feedback that you need with the calendar? We need that sent to you and to Dr. Burdson, if there's any questions or concerns that we have. Okay.
We, we've, school boards can and do make a difference in terms of student achievement. If this board had one goal, and the goal was that every child was going to read at or above grade level for each year they're in Norfolk Public Schools, but let's just say for the next three years, every child, we're, we're going to make sure that every child is reading at or above grade level in one year. You know, outlandish goal, but let's just say we had that. And then we were having a budget discussion. Superintendent could, could come back to the board and say, I can achieve that goal, but in order for me to achieve that goal, I'm going to have to stop doing 75 other things. We may not have athletics, we may not have this, we may not do that, we may not, we may stop this initiative. There are all kinds of things we may, we may do in order for the superintendent to come back with a recommendation to achieve the goal that we've set. So the board, setting that goal and being clear about the goal is important. And then, in the budget process, the board then would be looking for how the superintendent's recommendations are aligning with the goals that we, that we have. And so I think where we continually struggle is our, like, like we were just talking about, you know, goals and strategic planning, this, all of this being the same. It, it, it really is not the same. And so, to the extent that the board says to the superintendent, here's the goal, and then the superintendent says, here's the strategic plan to accomplish the goal, that's fine. But right now, I still think we tend to be disjointed here, which then causes disjointedness along the lines. So, all I was trying to get at is, in this process, where it is that the board is clear, and I talked about superintendent, I'm talking about the board being clear around, these are the three to five year goals that we've established, this is where we are, this is where we say we want to be at the end of the next year, the next two cycles, next two years. And is the board clear? Can the board clearly see alignment between the budget that we are receiving and the goals that we have set? And if the board sees that alignment, the board says yes, and all is done. If the board doesn't see that alignment, then the board has to have time to be able to say, we don't see that alignment, please go back and make some revisions, and we stay in that cycle until we see the, until we see that alignment. So my, my high level point was, is that in the, in the budget development timeline that's here now, this timeline makes perfect sense to me from the administration's standpoint. What I think is missing is where the board is clear in terms of, one, the, the goals that we've set and where we are based upon the data that we've, that we're monitoring. Two, the superintendent being able to bring back that proposal aligned with those goals. And three, the board being able to have time to say, yes, that accomplishes that, and then we adopt it. And so, that, that was the point that I was trying to make, and that was what I was going to try to, try to reference in terms of the budget develop, this is the budget development timeline. I'm talking about the budget timeline overall.
So.
Do you need a motion?
Ms. Clanton?
You ready to move?
Yes.
So, I moved that we, is that what you're ready for?
Yeah, I was getting ready to ask.
Okay, all right.
Well, I was going to ask finally, are we kind of clear what Mr. Jordan shared versus what we have here? Again.
I guess if we've got anything, we just need to email it. Are we adopting this or something?
No. No, no, no.
No, I'm not talking today. I thought I saw something. Okay, that's the twin.
Okay.
So with that said, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into closed session.
Second.
Okay, first by Dr. Martin, second by Mr. Clanton. Any discussion? Tanner, please read the motion.
Move that the members of the school board of the city of Norfolk go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2, dash 3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the school board pursuant to subsection 2.2, dash 3711, A1 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the session are the discussion of personnel on today's regular personnel agenda, the evaluation of the performance of the superintendent as required at least annually by law and provisions of the superintendent's contract, and the ongoing investigation and possible disciplining of specific personnel, consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members pertaining to actual or probable litigation as defined by statute, or regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections 2.2, dash 3711, A78 of the Act. The subjects of this portion of the closed session are legal advice and briefings and connections with the matters set out above in subsection A of this motion. Basine?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
And Buffalo?
Aye. We're now in closed session.